Call the meeting to order. Any items from the public?
Hello, Corey Rodriguez, 498 Woolen Mill Road. It's been awhile since I've been in here, but last time I was in here I talked to you about a few things. The one thing I brought up was about showers lane and trying to get the potholes patched. I assume somebody... but last time I was in here, I talked to you about a few things. The one thing I brought up was about showers lane and trying to get the potholes patched. I assume somebody passed that along to the WV Department of Transportation because the following week they did come out and take care of that. So I appreciate any help from you guys that involved that. The next thing, I know back on June, I believe it was fifth, House Bill SB five thirty went into effect. And that's the bill that took away the zoning requirements so that counties could create, I guess, a system for impact fees. So it does have to be today, but I would just like to know at some point, like, I know it doesn't happen overnight. I know there's a lot of stuff in the background that's gonna happen with that. So I was kind of curious, like, where we are with that, how we see it going along and when we think it could start to be implemented?
Just a quick, it's probably gonna be at least a minimum of a year because we have to go through a comprehensive plan, making sure it's up to date. We have to do it every five years. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then we have to get with, I think, the school board and different entities to make sure that we're all covering all of our bases before we implement anything.
Okay.
It'll be about, I would say, at least a year.
Okay. No, I just, I wanted to make sure something was, you know, going on that. I know it's just not gonna operate on.
As soon as it was.
Yeah, we're going to comprehensive plan update now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, that's a requirement.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And plus, Corey, there'll be an ordinance that will need to be created to spell out all the details of it as well. And there'll be an opportunity hopefully for the public to comment.
Okay.
They won't have a good document there.
Okay. No, that's good to hear. The next thing I wanted to talk about real quickly was back in April, April tenth Wednesday, we had Senator Blair, Governor Justice, and the Secretary of Transportation, Jimmy Riston, come up and they told us that we got up here, we got some mapping done, and they came up with a fifteen-point plan to alleviate traffic on Route Nine. And I know in follow-up months since then, I've heard Steve Varetti say that they reached out, they haven't got anything from them. And I know that's still true today. And I mean, I, you know, it's funny because you watched Jim Justice the other night at the Republican National Convention, and, you know, he's talking about why he'd be a good candidate for Senator. And he said one of the things he does is he never lies. But right here, he lied. Him, Senator Blair, and our Secretary of Transportation, Jimmy Riston.
You know, you believe them, you believe anybody.
Oh, I know. But what I would want to do is, you know, just like I come here and hold you guys accountable, I want you guys to hold them accountable. So for me, you know, if you're not gonna do what you say, then why are you in office? So I think.
How many, how many of them are in office now?
Two.
Yeah, but for how long?
Well, there's one that can stay in office if he wins the Senate.
Yeah, but not, not, not his office, not with the West Virginia Department of Transportation or Department of, Department of Highways.
True.
You know, so.
You're saying he's not there?
He won't be after December.
Oh, 'cause he's up?
He'll be in the Senate. That's the United States.
Oh, no, no. I, I thought, I'm confused. I thought you meant Jimmy Riston.
Oh, he'll be gone 'cause they'll have a new governor.
Okay. No, but I, I mean, for me, you know, with Jim Justice, I liked a lot of stuff he did. But at the end of the day, we're losing in Berkeley County, and, you know, he's a person that can control it. So why not ask him to resign? Why not use our advocate group that we're paying with taxpayer money for to ask these guys, get out of office? I mean, that's what I would like to see happen. I don't, you know, you should do what Jim Justice said. If you're in office and you open your mouth and say you're gonna do something, do it. If you're not, get out of office. We'll get somebody in there that's gonna do what they say. That's how I look at it. So, I mean, if you guys can do anything, I, I think you should keep throwing them under the bus and putting pressure on them. And, you know, see if we can draw attention. I'm, I'm sure it's not just Berkeley County getting screwed by our state officials and federal. So, I, I mean, I think it's worth it to, whatever we can do, just keep bringing it up, keep it in their mind, and just let them know, we're gonna keep throwing it at them. And the last thing I just wanted to touch on was the whole intersection, Apple Harvest Drive, eighty-one, the whole cluster, whatever. My question is, does West Virginia not have a law about blocking intersections, or do we just not enforce it?
I don't know. I, I would say if it was enforced, it would, it would definitely be an asset to the county to, as far as fines. That would be, hate to put it that way, but somebody blocking the intersection, I've been in many cities where it says, stay out of the box.
Yeah.
And everybody's trying to get through that yellow light, and it creates the issue. And common, common courtesy is not in any drivers.
They back up from the Lowe's light. That's, that's the problem. The Lowe's light stops them, and then they back up to the, to the Leavenworth interchange.
Oh, and on the other side, coming off the, the ramp on there towards Target, when you try and make the left under the bridge, I mean, it's a continuous right up the ramp.
Yep.
And, I mean, for me, if, if there is a law, I mean, they can make money all day there. I mean, it's nonstop, you know. And you could say, oh, well, you're just gonna hurt the West Virginia residents, but a lot of people to get off there aren't from West Virginia. And I, I mean, for me, I, I watched tractor trailers pull and block entirely all four lanes, so nothing goes. And you sit there four or five lights and you have nothing. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's the county Sheriff's Department or the state police, but I, if you guys can mention that, if it is, I, I mean, I would think it would help out.
It's been mentioned. Yeah, but it's, sometimes it's difficult that the other duties as assigned, it just, that's probably not the top priority.
Okay. And I think that's all I have. Appreciate your guys' time as always, and have a good day.
Well, just so you know, this body has sent a letter to every delegate and senator, as well as the Secretary of Transportation and the Governor's Office requesting road improvements and extensions. Every opportunity we have in face-to-face, that's part of our discussion, I can assure you, because it's only gonna get worse. As we continue to grow, and we're gonna grow, that's, that's obvious. So we're, we're in their ear every opportunity we get. But, but this body alone has sent letters to every body that has some authority with Department of Highways.
Okay, that's good. And I, I appreciate that. And I, I don't want you to feel like I come here and bring the same stuff up. It's more so, I wanna keep it top of mind and just put it out there for you guys and the public. But thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items from the public? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
Motion to approve the agenda for July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Purchase order log. Any questions for Tracy? I was gonna call her up here. Come on up, Trace. You're doing okay. Just checking. All righty, nothing there. No internal budget revisions. Change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Tony Petrucci, County Clerk for Stephen D. Smith, as a Deputy Kirk Clerk with an annual salary of forty thousand, effective August the first, twenty twenty-four. Change in status received from Chief Marty Rob, Martin Roberts for Philip Borrow. He is going from part-time firefighter one to full-time firefighter two with a salary increase from seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents an hour to fifty-six thousand, five dollars annual. That's effective August the first, twenty twenty-four. Change in status received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for the following, effective July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Justin Hunt is going from Help Desk Supervisor to IT Specialist Three. There's no change in salary. Andrew Davis is going from IT Specialist One to IT Specialist Two with a salary increase from forty-six thousand, seven forty-nine eighty to fifty-four thousand, nine forty-three. Nicholas Cackley is going from IT Analyst to being temporarily promoted to Help Desk Supervisor with a salary increase from seventy thousand, one oh five fifteen to seventy-seven thousand, one one, one hundred and fifteen sixty-five. We have a letter of resignation received from the Day Report Center for Brad Martin. That's effective July the twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Have a letter of resignation received from the Day Report Center for Tammy Hawkins, effective July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And that's all the changes. And we have approval of the amendments on June the twenty-seventh. We can stay in here. Everybody was present. Uh, next up is correction of assessment logs. Mr. Hess, we have twenty-three personal property tax exonerations. Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good morning. Good morning.
Uh, yeah, a little bit more than we had, because now that the bills are out, we can go ahead. We had some that we needed to correct. We had to wait for the bills, but they're out, so we've got a few of them on there.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, there's twenty-three of them, personal property, office air. Uh, there's three that's really making the values go up there, but most of them are just for what's described there as double build and that type of thing. But the three I want to make, mention to is, first one is for, on the first page, will be under Great America Financial Services. That particular parcel and also the parcel on page three under Great America Financial Services. Those two, what happened there is, in the first one, the value is three thousand, seven hundred, ninety-eight dollars, ninety-nine cents. And on that third page, that one was a little bit higher. It was nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. Now, it sounds like a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but that, what happened is the nineteen thousand dollar bill should have been in Martinsburg, and it was billed in the county under a different tax rate. And the other one in the county was billed in Martinsburg. So they just were backwards. So all she did was switch them back. So we, it's, it's a big exoneration, but it's getting, it's coming right back. The same way with the other one. So there's two big amounts of money that's being exonerated, but they're just moved to another spot and come right back on the actual. So, and the third one down there I want to mention too was for Motel Six on the first page. They.
Where's Motel Six?
Oh, Edwin Miller.
Oh, okay. The old, the old Akins?
Yeah, yeah. They had new construction. They were doing some, some work out there. They reported, it got reported on their return, but it wasn't finished yet. It shouldn't have been on there. So that had to come off there. So that was eleven thousand and some dollars, eleven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. So those three were the big, were the big money, but the others were just small things.
Does that mean that'll go up that much next year? Because you said the construction wasn't done?
Oh, it'll be picked up for next year, yeah. It'll show up next year.
It's that strip mall, strip mall in front of it or wherever.
Yeah, something's going on.
Motel Six, Jim, is down by the State Police Office.
There's another one back there.
It sits up on the hill right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And, but it'll show up next year. It just didn't belong on the twenty-four tax bill. So, but it would be in there for next year.
Is it because they remodulate rooms? It makes it go up that much? Is that what it is?
Not sure what all they're doing in there, but this was eleven thousand dollars.
That's a big number.
Yeah, probably remodeling and that type of thing. Don't take much for you remodeling a motel.
Yeah.
To make eleven thousand.
Tell me.
Any rate, for twenty-three personal property exonerations for office air amounts to forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Hey, can I have a motion to approve the.
Similar.
Tax exonerations. Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries, sir. Is that it?
No, we got a couple of other things here.
Okay.
The next thing on the agenda, I think I've got them in order here, would be.
The Spurgeon Properties.
Real estate?
Yep. I got it, I got it. We just have one for the real estate office air. That it was for Spurgens Trucking. He had, he, he had a couple farm applications that, two of them got keyed. This one did not get keyed or was, didn't get corrected. Didn't get the farm values put on it. So we had to correct it once the bill came out for the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. That's all we have for real estate.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the real estate tax exonerations in the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Two apportionment of assessment of taxes per final divorce?
Yes, sir. We do. We have two of them. And the first one is for a Mr. and Mrs. Abatore. I think that's how you pronounce that. And her name was, they pronounced that one either, Stan Nichechi or whatever. At any rate, they had, they had four vehicles, total assessed values of sixty-nine thousand dollars. And because of the divorce, we requested, they requested we split the, the bill. So we did that so that each one of them can pay their own part. Victor got two vehicles, total assessed value of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. And she got two vehicles, total value of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five, really even split. So you want both of them at the same time?
Yeah. Motion to approve the. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. The second one for Quaglio, Cindy, and Americas. They had one, two, three, four, five vehicles, total assessed value of twenty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And we split those up. Cindy got one vehicle for eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollar assessment. And Americas got the other four, total value of five thousand and twenty-five dollars. So just need your approval for those two, so we can split those bills.
Mr. President, I move to accept the two apportionment of assessment of taxes for, one for Sibotary and the other for Quaglio.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. One application for consolidation of property?
Yes, sir. Got one for Kenneth Edwards. He has three properties in Fallen Waters District. They're all in map two C, Parcels one oh two, one oh three, and Parcel ten. And he was, just wanted to put them together to get one tax bill, so we can consolidate those.
Okay.
I do have a D consolidation, but that's gonna be separate.
Separate, yeah. Okay. Have a motion to approve Kenneth Edwards' tax bill consolidate, I guess it'd be consolidation of properties?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second and a second. All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. And one D consolidation.
Yeah, these were, these were consolidated. He wanted to split them back apart. I don't know if he's gonna sell one of them or what. There's a lot, one oh one and one, one oh two, and one oh two A in the Mount Christian subdivision. And so we split them back out. And the total assessed values when they were together is thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars on the land. Improvements were fifty-two, eight sixty, total of eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. And now they're gonna be separate. One's gonna be a total of land value twenty-seven, oh sixty, improvements fifty. One's gonna be a total of land value twenty-seven, oh sixty, improvements fifty-two, seven forty, and total of seventy-nine, eight hundred. And the other one is land value of twenty-six, four sixty. No improvements on that lot. Total of twenty-six thousand, four sixty. So just splitting those back apart, which would get them back out to be separate parcels.
All right, you can have a motion to approve the deconsolidation of property.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, board meeting reports.
Mr. Boyd.
I'm sorry.
We do. Let's still bid open.
This bid opening for a remote operated vehicle, AKA underwater drone for law enforcement. It's grant funded. It has been advertised in the newspaper. You do have their certification distributed to known vendors and published all over the website.
I might bid.
Eddie, I think there were three, weren't there? Were there three? Three, sir.
Underwater drone.
No matter how many times you put in writing that the, the appendix B has to be in the front of the document.
There it is. Equipment proposal, request, let's see. Technology International is the bidder. Make sure I got the right page here. Quantity one. JW Fisher Sea Lion Three, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars total bid.
What's this thing supposed to be capable of doing?
I have no idea.
Looking, searching, underwater?
Yeah.
Is that it? Looking, searching? Are there retrievals right here?
No, I think it's just look.
And JW Fisher Sea Lion Three, this one is from One Nation Distribution LLC, forty-two thousand, eight ninety-eight.
Those were the people that bid on a vehicle one time, and we couldn't get in contact with them. That One Nation Distribution?
Oh, yeah.
They bid on a minivan here while back in.
Couldn't provide.
They wouldn't even call us back.
Okay, well, remember that in your review.
Well, hopefully they'll call us back if they're the low number.
And ROV, let's see. Proper Performance LLC. You need to know the city. New Wilmington, PA, I think that's, or New Washington, PA. JW Fisher Sea Lion Three Vehicle, forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Is that it?
That's it, sir.
That's it. That concludes the bid opening for the underwater remote operated vehicle.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, back to board meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Yes. I have a few meeting reports to report on. I was in a library meeting before I left, and there were a few things going on. The cast stones were loose on elevator shaft. They had two bids in. They went with Fry Mason for twenty-five thousand to fix the cast stones at the top of the elevator shaft. They were loose and some looking like they were ready to fall off there, so they had it taped off on the side of the building there. It was kind of an emergency fix they had to do. The HVAC system is finally getting ready to be installed over there. The installation starts on August the twelfth. They'll be closing one floor at a time as they do the work, as they had to take down the ceilings and entire floor and put up all new drop ceilings and all that to go in with the HVAC system and new light covers and all that sort of thing. So I see a projected timeframe on finishing of the project, but it does start August the twelfth. And that's major things going on there. Roundhouse meeting, still a lot going on down there with the farmers market and things. This weekend, Saturday, Christmas in July, we have sixty, sixty vendors gonna be down there this Saturday. Also, Saturday morning, there is a, a fire truck photo shoot for a, for a calendar. They're donating us a thousand dollars to bring a fire truck and put it on the turntable and take photos of it, put in their calendar. So that was a good donation there. And then we also received the Histories Archives Department of Arts grant through Randall's office, fixed twenty-three of the windows in the cupola at the roundhouse. Twenty-three in the worst shape up there because of the lack of guttered spout, which we have since got a grant put in place. The windows were rotting at the base. So they, they gave us a grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand, and we got matching funds from the legislators in an amount of twenty-one thousand, so forty-two thousand dollars in grant money there. The funds came from Senator Blair, Senator Barrett, Senator Trump, and Senator Rudker. They were the ones to put up the money to match the window funds. So I want to thank them. And let's see, also this Friday night down there, the Hades Town Team Partnership with the By George Museum, they have a show down there and it's sold out. I guess I don't need to promote selling tickets for that.
That's it?
Pretty much.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. In case you didn't notice, I wasn't here last week.
Yes, tell us why.
I attended a meeting for LGAC, which is the Local Government Advisory Committee to the Executive Council of the Chesapeake Bay. It was held outside of Ellicott City in the Turf Valley Resort, which is a nice place. Big golf course and two swimming pools and, you know.
How'd you shoot?
I didn't. I took the wife, and she laid out by the pool, and I had my meeting, and then we went to dinner with my daughter who lives in, about five miles outside Ellicott City in Seckville. So it was a very nice, nice trip. But the meeting, which I actually attended, was about, there's a post nineteen, or twenty-twenty-five document that's supposed to be provided to the governors. And it had been written, and we reviewed that, and it was, as most of those documents are, a bit wordy and technis, technis speak. And we objected to it, and that was pretty much the meeting. And then I had a, that was an overnight meeting, Thursday and Friday. And then I had, Wednesday I had the Telamon meeting, and that was pretty much routine. So I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have much interesting to talk about.
Very good.
Except for the Turf Valley Resort.
Nice. Sounds like it. Mr. Eddy?
Yes, sir. Last Thursday evening, had the Fire Board meeting, and a lot of that discussion, there's the house that the Fire Board purchased, hopefully where the Public Safety Building will go on Brown Road. They would like to be able to use it for training. So they're working through all the bits and pieces, you know, dealing with NFPA requirements and West Virginia DVP, to be able to get that structure where they can use it for a live burn.
I went through that with a project up in Inwood at the old, the old Inwood Animal Center is where the new ones at. There was a house there. It had to go through a lot.
Yeah.
Insurance, had to know, fire marshal, I mean, it had to get a whole bunch of stuff signed.
Was that Lynn's video?
Might have been. That little building.
Is it right there in front, had a glass front on it?
No, no. It was decided right where the Inwood Center, Inwood Animal Center is now.
So that was the better part of the discussion, of course, you know, starting in, starting into their new budget as well this year. At a, a meeting with the Development Authority, we did interviews with two separate engineering firms, Thresher and CEC, had submitted to them for services. So both of those firms were interviewed for services that the Development Authority may need moving forward. A meeting with Parks and Rec, which, you know, this is really, really their busy time of the year. I'm just gonna give a quick rundown on the parks. You know, of course, the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield at the Hoax Run Park had spring meals. The playground is, should have been constructed or started three, three days ago. So that, that's in, in motion down there. The pavilion that Macy's provided to the county, that is on site, and I would think that it will be stood up very shortly. Rooney Park, you know, there's been a lot of activity going out there, all kinds of partnerships. The construction of the batting cage pavilion continues with concrete being placed this week. Poorhouse Farm Park, Matt was very involved with his two-hundred-and-fifty steering committee with memorial benches that were placed out along the Tuscaloosa Creek. War Memorial, the Hallow Pavilion will be replaced with a new pavilion. It's the oldest pavilion out there, and it's, it's seen its day. So they're working with the War Memorial Park Association as well as the Park Board itself. All the pools are in operation. Everything seems to be going well. Pickleball courts, if you haven't been out on Baltimore Street, paving should be taking place tomorrow on those, and they'll need to set for thirty days so they can be resurfaced with the, with the playing surface. Currently, just as a point of interest, they have twenty full-time employees and one hundred and sixty-two part-time employees. They have nine hundred and twenty-six children in their summer camp. So that's, the Parks and Rec is, they're, they're pretty busy right now.
Also, new Gerald, the manager.
He's, he's doing well. Right out, right out the gate, he took care of a lot of ongoing maintenance issues that have, have not been addressed. So he's, he's doing well, plus he, you know, he's got a, he's got a person that takes care of most of his rec stuff. Like, they have a really good maintenance group, and they're able to accomplish a lot of stuff.
I know they keep the parks in excellent, excellent shape.
They do. I've not had one complaint this year about any of our parks, and last year we had multiple complaints, as well as my own complaints. So they're, they're doing very well, I think.
Yeah, I drive by the Beddington Dog Park all the time, and it's pristine. Of course, it's not used very much, but it's always very nice.
So they're getting ready to start a co-ed dodgeball league at the rec center?
Yeah.
Adult, adult co-ed dodgeball.
Yeah, they still use that old rubber ball.
I don't know. I just saw the head come out the other day.
He better be quitting.
They could use dual-purpose pickleballs. They really sting.
Yeah. I also had a nine-one-one advisory board meeting in which, you know, they're still on track for the, the Izzy Net January one, you know, which Gary was certainly familiar with. They're, they're recruiting right now for six call takers and soon to be dispatchers. And from a personnel point of view, they've not had any personnel changes since February. Good thing. LAPC meeting, I was not able to attend because of the Development Authority meeting ran over. But the big thing there was that the Health Department and Berkeley Medical were working on a grant to bolster up the Stop the Bleed program and try to get more of those kids out in the community. And they're preparing for a region, regional exercise on September the sixth. And had a criminal justice meeting yesterday. They have four hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty-two people in the David Port Program right now. You know, which, the DUI program is, is something new that Tim instituted a couple months ago. They've already had eighteen people complete that program, and currently they have twelve people in the program. Drug screens, they did over twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-four drug screens this past year. Home confinement, currently we have one hundred and thirty offenders in our home confinement program. And that's twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five days of, of supervision at a rate of fifty-four dollars and forty-eight cents a month when we hit that trigger, which is a net savings of one million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. And there are costs, you know, along with that, but eighty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars that they receive from the cost of the monitors and a hundred and thirty-five thou, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in supervision fees. So there's a lot going on over there. I was actually a little bit ahead of schedule yesterday, so I had the opportunity just to go and sit in the lobby and, and wait and watch. There are a lot of folks, and I'm surprised we're not replacing the hinges on the doors that come through there for testing daily, which you, I just, I just read that number, twelve thousand and almost thirteen thousand drug screens last year. And we're doing work for not only the state, but also the federal government as well. So they're, they're doing, they're doing a lot over there.
That is? Okay. That sounded like a good one.
I had actually a couple meetings and one that I was able to attend because the other two were conflicting. I had planning commission. We had four public hearings. One of them was a little bit contentious about the subdivision of a, of a two-acre lot that was already existing, and public water and sewer were available, so they wanted to subdivide two-third acre lots off of it.
In Hensel Heights.
In Hensel Heights.
Originally, they had all for well and septic, and then of course.
At two, a little over two acres, yeah. So now that the water and sewer is available, they wanted to cut down the size and, and make an adjustment to what they owned. So that was the, the biggest discussion part of it, but it's now at the planning commission, the planner side of it, to determine whether or not the waiver, you know, we approved the waiver to see whether or not it can be done. Other than that, that was, we had a couple preliminary plat to, final plat reviews with, those will be advertised and directed from there. So that's all that I had. We did have a Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority meeting, which I wasn't able to attend, but I did get notice that they are put out for hire for a clerk of the works for the new project going on down off Oak Corner Race in Raleigh. So looking for a manager sort of for that project.
Mr. President, if I could offer, you all noticed Penny isn't in her chair. She's on vacation, but she's paying attention, and she wants to let us know that there was not a motion and an approved motion to approve the consent agenda. So she didn't hear it. Do you remember doing it? Because if you did, Penny.
No, I did not, because it's not on here.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny, yeah. Go back to your vacation, Penny. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, opposed? Tell Penny.
That's right. What a lifestyle she lives, right?
Yeah, yeah. Wow, okay. So that's all that I have. Is there any board or commission vacancies we need to appoint? Anybody there? If not, David Bland, is he here? Come on up. Government Affairs Director for IUPAT Presentation and Discussion.
Thank you. I apologize. I was in Gilmore County yesterday, and I gave away more of the books that I have. Put mine like.
We'll share.
Share them.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I, and I need one to look at for myself. But it's just the information that I wanted to talk about.
I wanted to thank you for your time. I just needed a few minutes of your time. I am David Bland with IUPAT. I'm actually from Wood County, but I've been everywhere. Went to the commissioners meeting in Stonewall, Jackson, and I spoke to one of the commissioners at the annual conference from Jackson County, and he said, what you need to do is go to all the commissioner meetings and tell them the same thing you told me. So I didn't write on anything to sell. I just wanted to do a quick presentation about the IUPAT. So I printed off a lot of tin flyers, and it's all just to give me notes so that I can have stuff to talk to you. The very first one I always try to mention is the veterans. It's, we're in the veterans program where if any veteran gets out of any branch honorably discharged, within one year after they leaving the service, they can apply for the Helmets of the Hard Hats program. And this doesn't just apply for the IUPAT, this applies for almost all the unions. So it's, it's, to join almost every union, there's a long, strong-out process that's usually painful, but if they're a veteran, they can skip that process. painful, but if they're a veteran, they can skip that process and they can get direct hire as long as they come in within one year. And if they're in their, and if they join any of the unions, they also, while they're in the union, so our beginning guys get 60% of scale, the federal government makes up the rest of the wages while they're going through the apprenticeship program. So it really benefits our apprentices and our veterans when they get out of the military to go join a union and they can start out at full wages. It does take a little time because, I don't know if you know, the federal government doesn't move real fast. So you'll get your money, it just takes a few months after you got it, but I always put that first. The second flyer is a little bit about my union, IUPAT. We have about 2,000 members, we rise, in the spring and fall, we have fall outages. We currently need about 500 people to do hydrovac work at plants. It happens every year in the spring and fall for outages. So in the fall, we'll be up to like 2,500 members and a lot of those people leave because it's part-time work and come back in the spring. So we have work over here at the concrete plaque, that concrete factory all the time. IBS is in there and they use several local people here all the time over at that plant. And we did a lot of work down at the Procter and Gamble plant when they was building that. We've done a lot of work down there. The next flyer is about our training center. It's in Weston, West Virginia. It's a 96,000 square foot facility. We don't, we don't really get federal or state funding for any of our training. Our funding is all employee paid into. So we all pay money right out of our check right back into our apprenticeship program that pays for our training facility and for our two full-time instructors and our one part-time instructor. So we're self-funded. Nobody pays us to do our training. We do it ourselves. The next flyer was just, I just wanted to point it out, it's just several jobs that are around the state that our members do and then it just, it breaks down some of the different things we do, like we do bridge painting, drywall finishing, tank painting, glazing, which is installing of glass, and commercial painting, which is schoolwork, hospital work, stuff like that. That's just what that flyer is for. The next flyer is women's in union. We, I'll be honest, we're not as what we should be, but we're actually above most people. The numbers should be close to men being hired, but it's not. And one of those reasons is women don't apply as much as well either. So we have, you know, when you have 40 men applying, you have one woman apply, it's, the numbers are going to be more men than women, but the opportunity for women is there to do our work and that's what this flyer is about. The next one is the elevated tank training center at our training center in Weston. Why we bought that training center, it has an elevated water tank there and we're still in the process of making the first tank painting training center in the United States. So it's, hopefully we can get it done. We have a lot of contractors pushing us to do this for verification so that when they, when they take guys to do this kind of work, they will have already had some kind of certified training. So we're trying, we're still working on it, it's still in the process, it's not, it's been lengthy, it's been long, but eventually we're going to have this. And at our training center, when I was mentioning it, we do training there at Weston 20 weeks a year. So 20 weeks a year, we give our apprentices money to stay there, they spend money at the local restaurants in Weston area. We also have journeyman upgrades that go to our training center and we also have the only NACE training classes, courses in the state is at the IUPAT Training Center. NACE is now AMP, it's Certified Painting Inspectors. The only place to get them in the state of West Virginia is at our training center in The next flyer is partnership with Job Corps and I just went to a meeting because I really didn't know much about Job Corps and I still only know enough to be dangerous. I know that it's in Charleston and so what I gathered was you can, if you have troubled youth, you can send them there to get like high school diplomas and they could do pre-apprenticeship program. They stay there, they help them get driver's license, they help them get high school diplomas or GEDs. And the training they go through puts them in pre-training to be in IUPAT or in the carpenters' union. So after they accomplish what they're to do in the Job Corps, then we bring them directly into IUPAT. But it's a federal funded training program and really that's about all I know about. I know it's a good cause and I'm still learning about it.
Did you say they were Charleston?
Charleston.
There's one here too.
Yes, and it's for, they told me that it's for training for forestry workers or something like that? Yes, yeah, that is correct. They did tell me that. Because I was like, I thought they were everywhere and they said, no, there's another one over in the Panhandle and then they told me about it. So we're involved in it. The next one's reinvestment in your community. And I just bring it because, I don't, when our state did away with prevailing wage, we've, my biggest issue was in Morgantown where we used to do almost all the work in Morgantown with certified apprentices to do a lot of work at Ruby Hospital and at WVU. And over the last 10 years, our membership has went from 100 down to 50 and it's basically because they bring in a lot of cheap out-of-state contractors to do the work at WVU. And I love to use the one, Perkins Painting, because I've tried to take their workers before because I needed painters before. So I tried to offer them a job in the union to pay more, but nobody at Perkins Painting can pass a drug test, so I can't take anybody and that's the ones who paint WVU and Ruby Hospital a lot. Not all the time, but you reinvest in the local workers, the money comes back to the local community. And I say that even union or non-union, if you hire local people, the money stays in the community. That's the whole, that's the whole basis of the concept. Hire local people and the money stays in the community. The next one's just a map of the area that I cover. I'm the political director and it's an awful lot to cover. I cover part of Ohio, Kentucky, Virginia and all of West Virginia. And I'll be honest, I focus almost all my time in West Virginia and a little bit in Ohio because I live 10 minutes from Ohio.
What's the representation of the colors on that map?
Those are the different locals. So the yellow is 438, that's a small local up there. That local used to be big because of the steel mills. So one time there was 300 union workers up there that worked in the steel mills. Now there's about 40 because the steel mills are gone. And then, you know, the counties wherever here is 804, the southern ones is 970, the western one is 1072, that's part of Huntington, that's part of a little bit of Ohio, Kentucky and West Virginia. And actually some of Virginia. And then me and colorblind that I am, the below the yellow, the purple looking color is 93 over in Ohio. I've been the BA for the locals of four of them. I have changed around job to job to job. I think I finally like the job I'm in. The last sheet, or not the last sheet, but this next sheet is just some of the paint contractors that I, this isn't only paint contractors, it's drywall contractors, glazing contractors and general contractors that are West Virginia contractors. And there are more than that and I built this kind of in a hurry. So it may not be 100% complete, but it's a, it's a big list of contractors that, you know, if you have work, you could, you could always reach out to them to bid it. And if you can't find people to bid work, you could, you can email me and I've had them do it too, because I've talked to a lot of city people and they say, we've had jobs, we can't get, nobody showed up to even bid them. So I will find somebody. I will try my hardest to find somebody to bid your work if you have anything that you need bid. And the last one is our coating and corrosion expo that we have in Weston every year. And I always bring it up, we just had it in April, but so at our coating and corrosion expo, we offer courses and the courses are for continuing education. So what I do is I usually mail a lot of water departments and wastewater treatment plants. There's four hours of continuing education that we offer free to wastewater treatment plant workers, water treatment plant workers and state road workers. State road, bridge inspectors, actually, we usually have about 75 of them every year and we get, we get nothing from the state at all. We pay for everything. We pay, we actually have prizes we give away, we feed them breakfast, we feed them lunch and we offer four courses and it's a chance to visit our training center. I've had several House of delegates come over. Bill Miller, you know Bill Miller, the House delegate? He was, he's been there before. So we've had several there, but I just leave that, there's a QR code you can watch to see some of the stuff. I think Bill Hamilton, delegate Bill Hamilton from over by Cannon speaks at one of them. But I would invite you all over to visit our training center if you have the opportunity to come over and look at it. If not, you could send your water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant workers over at no cost and they could get four hours of continuing education that's required by law at no cost to them.
Have you been in touch with our water and wastewater?
I have before.
Because they're independent of us.
It's a long ways from here to Weston.
Well, yeah.
But they also go clear the snowshoe for courses too, so. And we, what I, I'll be honest, normally I get water departments that are within 50 miles. So the water departments that are closer to Weston, I usually go hand deliver.
Well, our water and wastewater departments are pretty big, so it's worth the trip.
Well, they could, and if it's big, then they can afford to leave some guys behind while some other guy is going to do it. Now, I've been to counties where they barely have enough guys to cover the water department. And when I was at the political meeting, the one thing that they, that was passed on the political agenda for the commissioners was to have the state put a 1% tax up for counties. There, because a lot of rural counties just don't have money. They just don't have money because they don't have enough people and everything and that was the, on the agenda for the commissioners was to try to get state legislators to do the same thing they've done for cities.
Tried for years.
Yeah, that was their number one on the agenda again this year, so. But that was all I had. If you have, do you have any questions for me?
David, how long does, how many hours are involved to get your employee from an apprentice to a journeyman?
So it's, by law, it's 144 hours. They have to have a year for four, for three years to be, most of our stuff, to be an industrial painter is four years. So we have 6,000 work hours and then three years at 144 hours of class time at our training center. What we do now is we, when our apprentices go, we pay for the hotel, we give them $32 a day to eat on and that's only to eat dinner because their breakfasts and lunches provided for them. And they get, they go to the hotels over in Weston and their employer lays them off. So they get a draw on employment for that week. And it's only three weeks a year, but it used to be four, they've cut it down to three, five, 10, or 10-hour days. They're five, 10-hour days, so it's 50 hours for three weeks and then they have to do two days at home on their computer.
We have a tank in the parking lot you guys can practice on.
Well, we'd love to. I have one more of these books. I apologize that I didn't have enough, but I was in Gilmore County yesterday and somebody said, you got an extra one? I was like, ah, not really, but yes, I guess. Are there any more questions for me?
No, I don't have, do you all have anything?
All right, well, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Petrucci, county clerk. Request for change staffing position and voter's registration.
Look at the backup you brought with you.
I know.
You guys most intimidating.
That's what I was getting ready to say, are we that intimidating?
You brought your, you brought your, brought your handlers in for you?
It has the request for change in staffing for voters, yeah.
Well, start, I did want to say that I do have some staff members here. I have Sherry with, who's our finance director, Penny who is the voter registration supervisor and Melissa's who is the, what is second in command there also. They're in the back just in case there's any questions that I can't answer. I did want to say something to Mr. Barnhart. I did attend a clerk meeting in Morgantown a couple of weeks ago, but I wasn't fortunate enough to have two pools and golf course. We didn't have the river and a fishing pole.
I was going to say, you had the river there, didn't you?
Yeah, we had the river.
It was nice, Tony, let me tell you.
I bet it was. 41 clerks showed up, there was over 100 people there and it was well worth it. Evidently clerks from this county hadn't attended in quite a few years, so they were, really didn't know, they had a clerk working accounting until I went, so, so yeah, we're here. And it was good, had a good time and a lot of information. But anyway, so much for that.
Did you take your work?
I did. We have some situations that I noticed in the voter registration office that needed And what we want to do is, and what I'm requesting, hopefully you all understand, is to, the three part-time positions we have in voter registration be combined to make one full-time position, which would give me four full-time people and one part-time. Right now staffing is certainly an issue just with two full-time employees. Voter Registration Office, I think, as most of you know, has changed over the years. There's more information from the Secretary of State's office that comes in weekly, it seems like. More technology that is very critical to these voting days we have. Coverage is also an issue right now. If you have one of the full-time people, it's all, you know, you still, you only have one full-time person there and sometimes you might have both of them off for whatever The part-time employee schedules do not always make covering the vacancy from time, time off and the time that is need to cover the work. You know, part-timers only work 20 hours a week. So at times, there's issues. And just a month, Penny brought to me something just a little bit ago that we have, went up from 91,000 registered voters to about a little over 92, just in one month, 92,000 people that's registered. So the bottom line in here is we want to be more efficient and we feel with having four full-time people and alleviating the three part-time positions and only having one, of course, we still have the contractors come in, we have, we still have Bonnie that would probably come in here one more time in September to help us out and Donnie with that, but they're contractual. So that's, that's why I'm here today is to hopefully move forward with this. We have the money, wouldn't go out of the budget. Actually, it would be about $45,000 under, we're still under that, so there wouldn't be any, any money asked from you all to cover this additional fourth employee. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have and if certainly I can't answer it, Penny would.
Is the full-time position, would that be hired from one of your part-time people?
No. We would advertise for that, yeah.
Good man. I have no problem with it. I mean, that way you know you've got somebody five days a week, you know, how many hours and how many days you don't, you're going on a part-time schedule.
Yeah.
As long as you're a good financial, yeah.
Yeah, we're good that way and we feel in. Yeah, we're good that way. And, and, um, we feel in early voting, we could put a person from the office at South Berkeley and Bettigian. And out of those two, we hire, which is always a plus for the, um, uh, poll workers if there's any questions. And with this technology, we feel we need to get, get these people trained, maybe all of us trained in, in that office to be able to answer questions from the public on election day where we don't have to scramble around and call ESNS or Mr. Wine or IT department for, for help. I mean, it, it could cut down on some time and money. Cause you know, every time it seems like it's, it's like a lawyer, you call ESNS, they bill you a thousand dollars an hour. So we want to, in a couple of years, I think you'll see some, some, um,
Return?
Return on, on your investment.
Just for purposes of clarification, it's a budget neutral request. He currently has three full-time positions with three part-time positions. He'll go to full, full-time, four full-time positions and no part-time positions. Correct?
Just one.
Said one.
Just one. We have, we would have one part-time.
But it will take, so in the funding mechanism, it will reduce the amount of hours available to that one part-time position.
Yes.
Making sure, Tony.
But we still have one part-time person in there.
Only way of three of the four.
We're the only way of three. Yeah.
Mr. President, I move to accept Mr. Petrucci's, uh, to approve his request.
For the, um, three part-time positions to
Turn into one.
Turn one full-time. Alrighty. Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Effective immediately.
We, we have to, yeah, advertise that. And, um, we're probably looking at September for that. So we, we appreciate that.
Alrighty. What's next?
Haba Grant.
Haba Grant. Alrighty. For election equipment.
Just one short thing. We have these available and I would advise that each commissioner have one of these in their office. It's the, uh, general election.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, where states.
I see Penny.
I see Penny. Penny, where's my?
Yeah.
Where's I? They're, they're only $25 apiece.
Take two, they're small.
Yeah, that's right.
Cash only. Gary, you picking up the bill?
Uh, I'm hoping you'll have a new read ahead on the Haba Grant Help America Vote Act of 2002. That's what it stands for. Um, we had, uh, two different requests. And this is all about, it's federal funding to states and territories to upgrade their voting systems and improve the administration of federal elections. Um, we feel that, um, Berkeley County is in need of, uh, more equipment down the road, more poll books. Uh, you, you have the list in front of you and you have the two different quotes. It's over a million dollars for the whole state that they're looking at. And we were talking about that at the, um, conference and, um, with the ESNS people. And we feel confident that we have a very, very good chance of, of getting a large sum of money compared to some of the other counties who do not have the population growth as we do, uh, to move forward with this. So, um, the one request is for $235,000 is some change. And the, uh, we'd have to pay 15% of that, which would be $35,000 and some change. The other request is for 177, 110. And with the, uh, 15% coverage on our end, it would be a little over $26,000. Um, and you're probably asking, who would fund the, um, balance, which
Match?
We would through a fund that, uh, Mr. Wine is aware of, Fund 61, which would cover the, um, amount that we would owe of 15%. So, uh, based on what we need, uh, what I've seen here with one election, uh, I would, I'm requesting the 235, 710 over the, uh, 177, 110. Uh, if you look at that, there's not that much difference, uh, with, um, what we would have to pay.
Just for, just for some background on those two numbers. Clerk Petrucci, uh, a, as you have heard, has been heavily involved in attendance in multiple meetings around the state. And he was presented with a number and a request for this. And this was the pioneer sky, what would make everything perfect in Berkeley County. The 177 was me negotiating, not the pie in the sky, but what was absolutely positively necessary to get him where he needed to be today. No, this is not changing technology. This is just new stuff. You already have the state of the art and most current technology. In the interim, it's come to his light, working with Elizabeth, that there's opportunity for the grant. So I would urge the commission, if you're going to move forward and make a request for the grant, that you follow the clerk's request and ask for the bigger number. If you don't get the grant, I believe the clerk is going to come back in and make a request that the county move forward with the purchase one way or the other. That's why I tried to get to the one, the smaller number. So for purpose of the grant application, the, the 200, 233, whatever the number is, makes all the sense in the world in my opinion.
Okay. Do I need a motion to, uh, to approve the request to apply for the Haba Grant?
That's correct.
Make a motion.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is for the total request amount of 235, 710.
Yes, sir.
Everybody okay with that?
And, and Petrucci, Mr. Petrucci, you have the grant of match funds.
It would cover Fund 61.
161, we have a fund that would be able to cover that $35,356.50.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. We thank you very much.
Is that it?
That's two for two.
Two for two?
Absolutely.
I'm just keeping score here.
Well, I brought the girls with me.
Appreciate you getting involved with the state on the, uh, clerks thing.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was, uh, very good. Uh, it was 41 of us clerks.
Yeah.
Over, over a hundred and some people total. And, um, a lot going on. Um, a lot interesting people. As you know, when you go to conferences, you meet, you know, every, everybody's different.
Yeah.
A lot of vendors there that were very
Did you wear a suit? Just curious.
Did I wear a suit?
Yeah.
Um, I believe I did one, uh, one time, one, one evening where they
He stuck out HD.
Well, I, you know, we, we attend some of these things and you see all, all ranges of outfits.
Oh, yeah. Shorts to suit.
Yeah.
Which is curious.
Yeah. Most people were dressed fairly properly.
Yeah.
Fairly.
Fairly.
But we, we had fishing poles. We weren't as fortunate as you, like I said.
It was a nice golf court.
He had bathing suits in lazy river, you know?
Yeah. Thanks again.
Lazy rivers. That's what we need. Alrighty. Uh, the resolution. Is that, uh?
This is, this is your, uh, to declare your unencumbered fund balance and state budget revision number one, uh, for fiscal year 2425. Uh, as, as you're aware
I need to turn my page. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. So as you're aware, this is the time of year where you take the cash that was left over at the end of the year, subtract any purchase orders or commitments from the prior fiscal year and come up with what was, what you're going to declare as your unaccompanied fund balance or unassigned fund balance. You had $190,529 of purchase orders or commitments left over from the prior fiscal year. You had, um, six point, well, excuse me. You budgeted 2.5 million for your unassigned fund balance. The difference between the cash balance minus the purchase orders from last year is an additional $3,722,468, which makes your unassigned fund balance $6,222,468. So you did really good in, and you and the constitutional officers and the department heads did really good being frugal with the monies that were available. So obviously on the revenue side, you now need to put those on the expense side. So my recommendations are, I made a mistake with purposes of account 404 and did not include the sheriff's supplemental pay of $15,000. So I'm recommending that we increase for account 404 by $15,000. Um, the next two are just internal. They're not putting any of this money there. Since you have a new custodial manager, we're separating what was account 420, uh, that had both custodians and facilities in it. So custodial, this will just be just salaries and it will be $380,715. And then we'll move Jack and his team and all the other expenses into account 435, which is public works. So we'll move that $685,098 to 435. And then the last two, we're dealing with your fund balance. I'm recommending that you put $897,970 in contingency and you put $3 million in account 988 to finish the construction projects that you already budgeted and have open. That does include the jail project for the expansion of the court. So
This says 897,970.
97, not 70.
Oh, excuse me. 897, 997.
Yeah.
Yep. I read it wrong. Excuse me.
That's okay.
You, you budgeted 209,180 in contingency. You add the 897, 997, putting $1,107,177 in your contingency account.
Very good.
Yeah, that
Give you a little breathe.
Remember that, you know, you moved monies from, um, multiple places last year during the construction into the construction account. Well, since the construction isn't done, all I'm asking is you keep that money and it follows suit and stays in the construction account.
Right. Okay. Uh, everybody understand what, uh, it's not a request. It's what happens.
It's what happens.
Um, motion to approve state budget revision number one is Fund 001 for the unencumbered fund. Okay. Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. And we're going to have an executive session on, um,
Legal matters.
Legal matters. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for any items from the public. If not, can I have a motion to go into executive session for legal matters?
Gary, and before we do it, let me spread it. I'd like, I'd like to thank you for your work on it, on that budget this year.
Yes, indeed.
Welcome. And there was a lot of hard work done. And, and to thank the collective officials and our department heads for being mindful.
Yep. And motion for an executive session for legal matters.
So move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second. And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. We are in executive session. Thank you.